One board member that's virtual.
Okay, we have one board member that's virtual.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittman?
Yes. Certification of closed session. Whereas the Dinwiddie County School Board has convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas paragraph two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Dinwiddie County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board. Dr. Elaine Pearson, District One.
I certify.
Dwayne Walker, District Two.
I certify.
Barbara Pittman, District Three.
I certify.
Mary Benjamin, District Four.
I certify.
Jason Brown, the second, District Five.
I certify.
Madam Chair, all certify.
Thank you. I invite you to participate in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, we need to add Agenda Item six point zero three under Superintendent's matter fiscal year twenty-six budget.
Thank you. Did everyone get that six, six point oh three?
Madam Chairperson, I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
It has been moved, it has been moved in properly. Secondly, we accept the agenda as, as amended. Those in favor, use the sign.
Aye.
Aye.
No, noes. The agenda is adopted.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the personnel list as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here and none. Dr. Weston?
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Midway's principal for the twenty twenty-five school year and beyond. So I'd like to have Chuck Simmons, if he would stand up, please. I want to tell you all a little bit about him. He is originally from, well, not originally, I think he's originally from Danville, but from New York, has several degrees in both elementary education and special education and can speak in Spanish. So I was pretty impressed with that as well. He comes to us by way of Danville where he has served in a number of capacities and currently he is a principal of, I believe it's a, what is it? Yes, the Activates STEM Academy in Danville and he's the principal there and has been. I want to tell you that when I reached out to references on his behalf, every person that I spoke to couldn't say enough wonderful things about you from New York to Danville and the work that you've done for young people and that they said if you, that you're getting a gem. And I'm just so glad that you, you found your way to Dinwiddie County. Thank you so much for joining us.
And here's in the family.
I think, yes, I think, you know, not tonight. Are you by yourself this evening or? Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Just want to make sure there wasn't anybody else. Okay, great.
Approval of student matters?
Madam Chair, I move that we uphold the recommendation of administration and expel student number E zero two slash two five dash one.
Second.
You've heard the motion coming from, and second coming from our board members. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention? The, the, we have one abstention, but the motion is carried. We have question? You want to do your question? You have a question?
No.
You just abstain?
You just abstain.
Okay. Motion is carried.
Madam Chairperson, I move that we uphold the recommendation of the administration and expel student number E dash two slash twenty-five dash two, finding that the student poses a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of others.
Second.
It has been moved in second coming from our board members. All of those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye.
One abstention, the motion.
He said aye.
The motion is carried. Recognitions? Rowantie?
Oh, yes. So I'd like to introduce, for those of you who don't know, this is Dr. Paul Lathrup and he is our new principal at Rowantie Technical Center. He's been very busy since he arrived last July, done a lot of really great things at the school. And so he's here, this is CTE month, and so he's here to talk to us a little bit about Rowantie and the great things that are happening there.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, the school board, community members and stakeholders. It's an honor and privilege to stand here before you tonight. I mean, it's my first time being in front of the Dinwiddie School Board, so I'm excited to be here and everything. This is the new principal of Rowantie. And we hit the power button on the microphone. Each one is different. It's a different first time, rookie mistakes. But just wanted to speak with you a little bit about what's going on at Rowantie, kind of give you a little bit of a state of the union kind of thing, as well as a past, present, future for Rowantie, just to kind of share with you and everything this evening. So by the numbers, Rowantie, this current school year, we have two hundred and fifty-four students, of which one hundred and twenty-two are Dinwiddie High School students. We're really excited and love to celebrate our Dinwiddie students. We have a number of programs here. We have nine programs currently this year. I've got a little asterisk, everything next to criminal justice. Due to, due to a teacher leaving us mid-year, we did close that program mid-year, but I'm happy to report that all of our students enrolled in that program earned all of the high school credit associated with that, as well as any of the dual enrollment students of that program are continuing asynchronously their studies to ensure that they earn the same number of college credits they would do if the year continued. Present Rowantie, so there are three pillars I like to think of when I think of career technical education. The first is the same as in any subject matter, whether it's math, history, English, CTE, which is strong instruction. We go one step further of that, which is strong instruction that leads to an industry certification or state licensure. So whether that's a nurse aide certification, a state inspection license, what have you and everything. So we go above and beyond in terms of making sure our students are college and career ready. So it's a theme you will hear tonight and you will hear from me throughout my tenure and everything as the Rowantie principal. But the other two pillars that really, again, these three pillars basically create what we call the Rowantie experience is, is, is things we want to focus on and everything. So one of which is what we call a CTSO or Career Technical Student Organization. In short, it's simply a co-curricular program that extends the classroom beyond. Some of the opportunities allow students to network with their peers from other career technical education programs. One of the biggest things is competition. So I'm happy to report that Dinwiddie has had five students this year qualify for the state championship, which will be in April, competing in competitions such as collision and repair, cosmetology, and several others. So we're really excited about what that looks like in terms of our Skill USA. All of our students at Rowantie are active participants in their CTSOs. So Skills USA is for all of our programs with the exception of for Nurse Aide. Nurse Aide has their own, which is HOSA, the Health Occupation Students of America. And we also reopened our chapter of the National Technical Honor Society this year, and we have six students from the fall, and we plan to extend that number and everything this upcoming spring with additional students participating there. Another big pillar, as, as we speak and everything in terms of career technical education is work-based learning. Now that is going to look a little bit different, I'm sure. There's been conversations on what used to be called school accreditation and everything and what that is and what's important in terms of work-based learning as it pertains to that, as well as the profile of a Virginia graduate. But this is one of our big priorities this year and it was something not only just for the accreditation piece of it, but just making sure we're doing right by students and having them have full exposure to the careers and what's associated with it. So so far this year, we've completed seven hundred and eighty-seven experiences. Again, by the numbers there, we've got three hundred and six guest speakers, we've got workplace tours, job shadows, as well as high intensity experiences. These are the experiences that do count towards those accreditation and the, the models that you've probably heard of before and everything. But we've got thirty-two experiences of service learning where students are going out in the community, identifying a opportunity and solving that opportunity as it pertains to their program of study. We have sixty-six student experiences in terms of student-based or school-based enterprise where students are applying what they've learned in class to either the school itself and beyond. So we have students that are, as part of that work-based learning experience with school-based enterprise, building sheds for community members and being able to essentially have a, a zero-cost lab activity over several months, giving them real-world experiences, as well as having them work on the electricity and different aspects of the school. So as we not only improve our school quality and everything, we're giving the students those opportunities to learn beyond. So really excited about that, as well as thirty-five students in our Nurse Aide program going out and spending at least forty hours each year with direct patient care at an assistant living facility in the community. So that was the present, so I want to take a step backward and talk about the past. So again, I mentioned the concept of Rowantie students are college and career ready. Vocational education is an outdated term, which came from really back in the seventies and it was really for a place that, for students that aren't college-bound. So it was focused on employment after graduation, as you heard me mention throughout this presentation and everything. The term now is career technical education. It's National Career Technical Education Month this month. And it's really meeting students where they're at, they have, with them having different goals. A student in automotive, so to speak, may have an interest in learning just how to do their own brakes and how to do their own oil. They may want to be a mechanic or they may want to be an engineer and they want to learn the hands-on aspect of it. If you've ever replaced a car battery in a car, and I know I have, sometimes it feels like you have to take about half the engine apart to be able to get to the battery. Well, that's because an engineer designed it. I'm not knocking an engineer and I've studied engineering, but an engineer said there's an opening there and that's where the battery will go. Doesn't have anything to do with the serviceability side of, I have to take this in and out and replace it at time to time. So it's important that we're giving all of our students these opportunities to be able to learn and be able to learn not just the theory, but the practicality side of things as we go. So again, staying in that past, looking at Rowantie from the past, so classes that have been offered at Rowantie from the seventies and nineties, if you look at it and you kind of combine some of them, it's really no different than it is today. And I think we would all agree that careers and industry and whatnot have all changed, so to speak. And it's not knocking what we've done or saying that it was done wrong or anything like that, but it's something as we look to expand and offer additional opportunities for our students, we need to look at the data and the research about what's growing and what students are interested. What are high-demand, high-wage jobs, which again, factors back into that profile in terms of accreditation. So again, looking at this, the only program that we've stood up since the seventies was criminal justice. So again, there's a need for us to evolve and again, continue with what's worked for us in the past, but also evolve to what's, what's being active in our community and being able to do the best we can for that. So now we step into the future. So this is the exciting part. So data shows that careers and jobs in the Commonwealth and in our community, to the biggest areas are healthcare, as well as engineering and manufacturing. So we're interested in expanding our health science programs, looking at programs such as medical assisting, sports medicine, and medical billing and coding. So we finished our second, what we call Opportunities Day today, and we have hundreds of students between the three school divisions that are interested in careers in the health sciences. We have forty spots at Rowantie for Nurse Aide. That's it. So every year, we're turning away students that are interested in this, that we could have different licensures and different certifications and have these students, if they choose not to go to a four-year school, stay within our community and, and be valued members of our community and our workforce. The other big one, which is arguably a passion project for me, so prior to becoming a school administrator, I was a mechatronics and industrial robotics teacher, is engineering manufacturing. There's a lot of engineering and manufacturing in Prince George and Dinwiddie and the surrounding communities, and it's only going to get more and more attractive for pharmaceutical companies like it's coming in the greater Chesterfield area. So looking at manufacturing systems, mechatronics, and unmanned aircraft, I'm happy to report that we've written a grant through Go Virginia in conjunction with the Cameron Foundation for six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of funding that I'll present now because of snow on March eleventh. But we're really excited about that and that's going to give additional certification opportunities for our students and it has a return on investment of that six hundred and twenty-five thousand over four hundred and nineteen percent over a five-year period of time. So again, we're really excited about being able to offer students those, those opportunities. Again, surveys from the three school divisions indicate that we have over three hundred students interested in engineering and manufacturing. Currently in the three school divisions, we do not have any offerings for those students. So we've identified this as a need and again, as we grow and evolve with Rowantie, we want to make sure we want to, we want to offer opportunities like this to our students. Some other fun in terms of the future, we've identified a need. So again, we've talked about how we're a market for all students, not just students that aren't looking for an opportunity right out of high school. But again, all of our programs for next year are going to be honor, or have the ability to be honors level. So again, we've identified that a barrier for entry for some of our students taking our classes is that they can stay at the high school, take three credits that are honors that maybe aren't really associated with what they're looking for in terms of careers after high school because they're GPA-seeking and what have you. So we want to make sure that we're offering our students and they're doing the hard work associated with it, so it makes sense that we can offer those honors-level programs and everything. We're also expanding our current offerings, so similar to how you would do at the high school with Spanish four and five, we're doing mixed classes. So if a class such as carpentry still has additional seats left over after the juniors or seniors that are taking that entry-level class are there, we're able to bring back students from the year before to continue to not only fill those seats, because that's not what we're looking for, but to give students that are super passionate about that career fair, the ability to further, further explore and take on more of a contractor role in that particular program as opposed to just, just a worker. So we're excited to be able to offer that in collision repair technology, formerly auto body, carpentry, as well as masonry. We're also looking at increased stool enrollment opportunities with Brightpoint again. This feeds your former model in terms of accreditation. For next year, and I'm happy to report as of today, we evolved but signed off to be able to offer Nurse Aide as dual enrollment for next school year. So this is something when we go to different recruiting events and everything, a lot of those students are like, I wish this was dual enrolled. So Nurse Aide, for example, in one year, a student can leave with their state license, their CNA, along with up to six college credits. So, and it's all free. We like that. We have an opportunity with welding, our teachers retiring, so we've, we have a couple applicants that will start the interview process with shortly, but we have the ability and we have the conversation open with Brightpoint to be able to have welding also be dual enrollment for the following year. Another program that we're looking at as early as next year is Student Development, STV one hundred, and they also have STV one oh one. But that's an entry-level orientation class taught at Brightpoint that ensures students are successful in college and beyond. This is a one-credit class that depending on what we decide at Rowantie and between the three school divisions, we can get to a four-credit model, so students would give up four credits to come to Rowantie and earn four credits as opposed to sacrificing our credit out around that mix. And again, for the following year, provided that we receive that grant funding and everything, that engineering, manufacturing program would also be dual enrollment applicable and everything through Brightpoint. So we're excited for that. Finally, I just want to share just a couple quick calendar updates, and I have one wrong date on there, I apologize for that. The Reverse Career Fair is actually March seventh, so it's next Friday. So we've got students from all three divisions participating in that event, it's a Brightpoint event. Trades Interview Day, we pushed back to March twenty-fifth just so that we could really focus on that Reverse Career Fair as well. But that's an interesting opportunity where we're bringing in business partners and instead of just the traditional career fair where you're going table to table, we're having students interview with three or more companies that are hiring so that right out of high school, if they choose to, they have jobs within our community. So we're really excited about that, again, leading to employment right out of high school and/or giving them the experience of interviewing as they go into four-year school and beyond. That Skills USA State Championship, as I mentioned, is, it's the weekend of spring break, but it's April fifth, so we'll have, like I said, five Dinwiddie students competing. We're really excited about them representing not only Dinwiddie, but Rowantie and our community as a whole. And then Career Signing Day, where any student that has secured full-time employment after graduation tied to their program of study or in, has enlisted in the, one of the branches of military will be recognized, similar how you would do with a athletic signing day. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any questions for me at this time.
Are there any questions? Well, I'm happy to see the new, the new, the additions, the partnership with Brightpoint. And I guess they, I can say that we have a warm agenda of, of the listing of classes or careers offered. I was talking to my granddaughter yesterday and I asked her, how was school today? And she said it was chill. And I said, well, what kind of day is a chill, chill day? But she said, that was old, old-fashioned, same old thing. So I'm glad to see that we have warm classes offered now at Rowantie. And it is what, what the students are asking for in the community, you know, do we have this? So, and we're opening up more. So I thank you for your work for going out and bringing that in for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I would just like to publicly thank Dr. Lathrup for his leadership. He really has hit the ground running at Rowantie and for, you know, for the, any of us that have been around a while, the things that you've done at that school already in just a very short period of time have been unbelievable, the manner in which you work with our coordinators and our directors and just opening doors for kids and providing opportunities for our young people. I'm very excited to see what the future's going to hold. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
I would like to echo that. I, I've been really, really impressed with Dr. Lathrup and I want to publicly acknowledge that here you've, I don't think we knew what you were inheriting. Certainly you didn't know what you were inheriting, but you've done an amazing job in sometimes less than ideal circumstances, especially with all the water situations we've had to deal with in that building. So thank you for what you do.
Always smile. Always got to smile. Yes.
Well, we're very proud, I'm always very proud to hear of our Dinwiddie students. So you said we have five who are going to.
Five? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
So next we have the Teacher of the Year.
No, the division's. Oh, okay. Forgive me.
Teacher of the Year?
Good afternoon to everyone. It always brings me a great honor and pleasure to stand before you and recognize our Teachers of the Year. I do believe that Dinwiddie County Public Schools has some of the best and brightest when it comes to all of our staff members, particularly our teaching staff in particular. And we, on an annual basis, do the Teacher of the Year program. We run it in tandem with the state's Teacher of the Year program, which is a very rigorous process and requires the teachers to do a lot of self-reflection and thought into giving some essays as far as what their philosophy is on teaching, how they promote student impact. And it was really just amazing to be able to look across the spectrum of the schools we have in Dinwiddie County and see all of the good things that our teachers are doing across the community. So while I cannot highlight every single teacher tonight, I'd like to be able to recognize the seven teachers that were recognized across our school division for Teacher of the Year. As I read the mini-bios for each recipient, when I call your name, I ask that you would come forward and stand to my left. The first recipient I would like to recognize today is Ms. Tabitha Hayden. Tabitha is a third-grade teacher at Sutherland Elementary and is celebrated for her unwavering commitment in creating a safe and inclusive environment where students feel valued and supported. I will also add that she also holds a special education endorsement and served us in that capacity for several years prior. She has a teaching philosophy that emphasizes education as a tool for empowerment and lifelong growth. She brings learning to life with hands-on activities, collaborative projects, and real-world applications that engage her students and make the material relevant to their lives. Beyond the classroom, her leadership as a club coach has demonstrated her dedication to fostering teamwork, perseverance, and sportsmanship. Congratulations to you, Ms. Hayden. I would now like to recognize Ms. Kelly Paramprocyce. Ms. Paramprocyce is a dedicated second-grade teacher at Southside Elementary with seventeen years of experience. Congratulations. Kelly's journey into education began with her deep admiration for her teachers at Sunnyside Elementary and her desire to give back to her community. As a proud Dinwiddie alumna, she has dedicated her career to fostering relationships, inspiring critical thinking, and serving as a role model for her students. Kelly's ability to make learning engaging and her passion for creating lifelong love for education in her students exemplify her commitment to excellence in the classroom. And I'll also add, she has one of the classiest dressing mothers that I know around, one of our former employees, Ms. Penelope Param. Congratulations to you, Ms. Kelly Paramprocyce. Mrs. Shannon Crowder is a fifth-grade teacher at Sunnyside Elementary. And she has an inspiring amount of twenty-six years of teaching experience. Her love for education stems from her childhood, inspired by her cousin's dedication as a pre-K teacher. Her philosophy of teaching to the heart first has created a nurturing environment where students feel loved and supported, allowing them to thrive academically and socially. Shannon's leadership roles, including mentoring student teachers and serving as a science department chairperson, highlight her commitment to fostering both student and teacher success. Congratulations to you again. We'd also like to highlight the success of Ms. Sabrina Marshall. Ms. Marshall is a kindergarten teacher at Dinwiddie Elementary. There you go. You're welcome. Who's twenty-nine years of experience reflect her steadfast commitment to early childhood education. As a two-time Teacher of the Year awardee, Sabrina's philosophy of being a pebble creating ripples highlights her understanding of long-lasting impact that educators have on students' lives. Her dedication to literacy, her creative approach to parent engagement, and her ability to nurture young minds have earned her numerous accolades. Sabrina's passion for shaping foundational skills and fostering a love for learning in her students has been truly amazing. Congratulations to you. Our next recipient is Mr. Scott Watts, who is a math teacher at Dinwiddie High School. He has transformed the way students approach STEM education. Over his career, Scott has championed rigorous learning opportunities from introducing AP Calculus curriculum to mentoring students. His belief that every student can succeed with the right support drives his dedication to building confidence and resilience in learners. Scott's innovative teaching methods and leadership in math education have left an indelible impact on countless students, preparing them for the challenges of higher education and beyond. His principal applauds his tremendous growth. Congratulations to you, Scott. From Dinwiddie Middle School, we'd like to recognize Mr. Daniel Rogerson. Daniel is a health and physical education teacher at the middle school, and he brings a unique perspective to education from his time in the U.S. a unique perspective to education from his time in the U.S. Army and as a respiratory therapist. Daniel's dedication to teaching students how to be exceptional human beings is evident in his creation of the county's first varsity girls wrestling program and his efforts to instill confidence and discipline in his students. His innovative approach to adaptive physical education and his philosophy of fostering self-worth and confidence in every student make him a standout educator. Congratulations to you, Mr. Rogerson. And now for our Division Y Teacher of the Year recipient, I would like to recognize Ms. Ashley Hall. Ashley gets two plaques today because she was nominated by Midway Elementary School as well as our Division Y Teacher of the Year recipient. We celebrate her today for her incredible dedication to fostering creativity and self-expression in students. For 18 years, Ashley has inspired young learners through engaging art projects such as the cherished Christmas ornaments and legacy stones, which leave a lasting mark on the school and the community. Through art, she has created a safe learning space for students to express their emotions, their identities, and find solace in creativity. She has encouraged openness and self-expression, helping her students to become more comfortable in discussing their feelings and their mental well-being. Her pioneering leadership in the new Visual and Performing Arts Gifted Program has also elevated the students' creativity, and her efforts in the Fine Arts Festival have made art a celebrated cornerstone of the school's culture. Ashley's passion for teaching and her unwavering belief in her students' potential make her an exceptional educator. So we salute you, Ms. Ashley Hall. And she submitted her application to the state, I don't know, maybe two, three weeks ago now? So we are awaiting their review and apply on her application. But at this time, I would like to give everyone here in the room an opportunity to celebrate all of our Teacher of the Year awardees for a job well done with a round of applause. I'd also like to acknowledge, if there are any family members who came to support our Teacher of the Year recipients, we want to make sure we recognize you because we realize that they cannot be their best selves for us if they didn't have a nurturing and supportive family at home. So if you are here today, if you could please stand. Also, see that we have some colleagues from schools here as well to celebrate our Teacher of the Year candidates. Once again, we just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. We know that your job is not easy, but every day you show up and you provide us unwavering, dedicated support. We hope that... I can't see. Miss Robinson-Williams. We hope that you can stay behind and take a picture. Are you doing that right away?
Right.
Okay. So when the recognitions conclude, we hope that you'll be available to stay behind for a picture. If not, we certainly understand. But thank you so much for your time and thank you for your service. Congratulations.
Hello, Dr. Weston and school board members. February is a month used to communicate love. And during this recognition period, that's exactly what we will be doing. Today, we want to recognize our Spelling Bee winners. And so would winner Megan Tabamo, please come up. And runner-up Madison Naswanger, please come up. All right, we'll make sure Madison gets hers, but Megan will be receiving a glass plaque. I don't want to take it out because fingerprints will get all over it, but congratulations, Megan. All right. Megan will represent Dinwiddie on February 27th for Regionals at the Richmond Times-Dispatch. So we're rooting for you, okay? On the 27th. All right. This month, we would also like to recognize our school counselors who celebrated National School Counselors Week, February 3rd through the 7th. Our crossing guard who celebrated National School Crossing Guard Day on February the 12th. Our school resource officers and school security officers who celebrated School Resource and School Security Officers Day on Saturday, February the 15th. And now, we would like to pin some special honors to a few special people. First up, to the school board clerks, Bonnie Gosden and Hannah Burnett Deputy Clerk, who celebrated School Board Clerks Week last week. But unfortunately, it snowed a lot last week, so we weren't able to give you your flowers. So Marion is coming up to give you your flowers. Thank you so much for all of your hard work. Those are just a little token of our appreciation, okay? Thank you. This month is also School Board Appreciation Month. This year's theme is Champions of Opportunity: Advocates for Excellence. It highlights the efforts made by school board members to create pathways for student achievement and innovation. Board members, today you are receiving a little token of appreciation. We hope this bookbag/cooler that you're about to get will be useful as you travel to programs, events, or in the community. It is filled with snacks and drinks to keep you nourished and hydrated as you continue to serve throughout the rest of the year, as well as as you spend time relaxing with your family. So please be careful, there's soda, water, cookies, everything is in there. So make sure to keep it in your car so you can have a go-to to get snacks as well. Mrs. Pittman, I know you're watching, we have your bookbag come in shortly, okay? All right. We thank you all for all of your hard work and your dedication. At this time, before I segue and go out to the hallway for pictures, I would like to remind everyone in this room that we have two very important events coming up. The first is March 3rd through the 7th, which is National School Breakfast Week. It celebrates the importance of nutrition school breakfasts and fueling our students as they come to school and get ready to learn. School board members and parents are invited to come next week for breakfast at one of the schools. In celebration, the Nutrition Services Department will give away free treats for students who come to school and have breakfast. And the date will be announced shortly via social media and Blackboard, okay? The last event is none other than our very own Fine Arts Festival. It is very important that you all come out on March 20th. It will be held from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Dinwiddie High School. There will be performances and artwork from our students throughout the county. This event is free and it's open to the public. And again, I say thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna take a short break now. Recipients and honorees are gonna get pictures, and everyone in here are invited to a cupcake in the lobby. So we'll take about five minutes for that, and then we'll reconvene. Go back into session now. Hope everyone has been refreshed with a delicious cupcake and a bottle of water. Are we gonna close the door?
He's gonna close it.
Okay.
Just pull it hard, Mr. Tucker.
Can you bust the door? I'm on a truck.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the expenditure report.
Madam Chairperson, I need that we accept the expenditure report as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the expenditure reports as presented. All of those in favor, use the usual sign aye.
Aye.
Expenditure reports are accepted. Minutes from the last meetings. I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting as they're presented to us.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we accept the minutes of January 14th and January to 28th, 2025. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Board matters.
Mr. Walters will be taking care of this. And Mr. Hawkins.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
I've asked Mr. Hawkins to come in case you have any technical questions that he can answer. So we did an audit of our playgrounds recently and discovered that a lot of our playgrounds, as you know, sit near major roads or busy roads and woods. And that becomes an issue when you have children out there, and you know, children tend to wander and do their thing. And we want them to be able to do that, but we want to be able to do it safely. So we went out and got solicited quotes from three different fence companies. And what we're gonna do is we're going to enclose the playground area of our elementary schools tactfully in vinyl black fencing. This fencing will serve as an aesthetic improvement to the area because we're also, if it's facing a parking lot or facing a main road, we're gonna put wind screens on them that may, for instance, say, "Welcome to Sunnyside," or whatever the elementary school is. We're gonna do that in all of them with the exception of Sutherland, whose fencing and playground is all on the back. They'll still get the vinyl coated fencing, but it won't have the windscreen on it. The total, Mr. Hawkins did a great job of listing these separately to get us the best value we could. And the total for this project on all four is gonna be about $91,000. We did get top-notch fencing. You know, Mr. Hawkins has a lot of experience in fencing, so he was able to go out and make sure that we're getting the proper, you know, diameter poles and the proper mesh and things like that. So we're really excited about that job, and it looks like we're going to start that job in the next couple of weeks. Not sure what school they're gonna start at, but anyway, we're here just to basically get your approval for this project and make sure that we're good to move on. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we had a question.
get your approval for this project and make sure that we're good to move on. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, I'll have a question. I didn't ask if we had a question. At Sunnyside, would they need a fence or would you put it over there by the playground?
Yes, ma'am.
Go around back?
Uh, on your, in your packet, it shows exactly where it's gonna be, but it's basically gonna be along the road there. What is it? Is that Melvin Allsbrook Road? And then down, take a left at the woods and come around the backside. Yeah.
I, I, I really think that's a, uh, a, a good project. I'm glad that you decided to do that because, for one reason, you know, kids now, you look around, you see in one moment, they gone.
Yeah.
And it's hard to have, I don't care how much help we have, it's hard to have enough help to just, to watch all the children. We still, the eyes just won't, won't do.
Well, the ratio is usually twenty to one, you know, student to teacher, so.
And when I saw this yesterday, I thought that was a very good idea. And I started kinda imagining the buildings and where they are located, like you said, with the woods and whatnot, and definitely close proximity to the roads.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think this is a good, um, project that we undertake.
Yep. We're excited about it. I think it's gonna make a big difference for our, for our students and staff.
And you feel better, you feel better if you have the duty to go out to supervise the students. And you know if you have this gate, they can't get out over on the other side of his two people there just watching them, so.
Yep.
Will, will all of the fences be accessible from an exit on the building?
Yep, they will. Nope, they will, they're, now, if they're going to, like, for instance, at Midway, if they're gonna try to get to, uh, a part of the field day, they'd have to go through the gate, but they can access, come out the school building, go to recess and go back into the school building without ever going through the fence. The fence is using the, the, the building as part of the encapsulation.
Can you remind me of what the material is gonna be?
It's gonna be.
Nine gauge black vinyl, powder coated rails, powder coated top posts, tension cables at the bottom.
Okay, is that gonna be a lot of maintenance down the road, like with leather and?
No, sir. We, uh. Go ahead.
We got pricing on a lesser fence and then a better fence. We had the choice between extruded and fusion bonded. We went with fusion bonded. It was only about ten percent more and the longevity of it is probably twice as much. And it's sturdier and heavier, therefore kids crawling and climbing on it is less likely to damage it. In the long run, you get way more bang for your buck.
Will you have a barbed top or no?
It'll be the standard twist that you would cut off if you were gonna separate it.
But we wanted to avoid having the standard metal chain link fence that looks rusted after time. I just didn't like the look.
As you're looking at your plans, those, those aerial photos were taken during summertime when the foliage was on the trees. Uh, we actually started today cutting down some of the vegetation that would've been hanging over top of the fences to ensure the longevity, to make sure that after we put these fences up, trees aren't gonna fall and damage our investment. That was one of those things I took into consideration along with the topography of the land and making sure we could get access to lawn equipment and, uh, like bucket trucks for lighting and stuff, is what we chose to put in the, uh, the gates for access later.
Will they all be enclosed? I think the second to last picture I just saw.
All right, so Denwood Elementary will be completely enclosed from the, uh, northernmost sidewalk around the existing fence. If you wanna go up to the top, whoever's controlling that. Bonnie, sorry Bonnie.
There you go.
All right, so Denwood Elementary is coming around where they already have an existing fence in front of where their, uh, their boiler room is, is following that same curve of their parking lot, is coming along their paved basketball court. So the basketball court is still part of it. It cuts across and encompasses their current swing set area. And then we, at the top of that ridge line, we took a straight line to the corner of the building, so we'd have as many ninety and forty-five degree angles as possible on that for aesthetics. If you go to the next one. All right, that's Midway. We designed that one so they could come out of the gym and never, and never not be encompassed by fencing. You come out of the gym, the, where you see, uh, I guess it'd be the top right corner of that picture, the door is where that yellow thumbtack is, so they have access from that door or the door going out into the major part of the field where they have access. So if they go out for field day, they're completely encompassed. And the, the playground, we're redoing the entire fence around, I'm sorry, the blacktop, we're redoing the entire fence around the blacktop as well, 'cause that was, that was pretty well worn out. That was one of those situations where in the, the lower part of that drawing, where we had to really take the, the vegetation into consideration, 'cause it's a lot of old deciduous growth along that side that we wanted to make sure if it fell, it couldn't land on our fence and damage it. Um, you can go to the next one if you want, Bonnie. Southside is not one hundred percent encompassed by it. The sidewalk coming out of the building, once they get down that sidewalk to, uh, the middle of that left red line, uh, the middle left-hand thumbtack, they're completely encompassed by them because there is a fence that goes along behind the old rescue squad building, goes along the wood line, and it reconnects over there towards the, uh, wastewater facility. That, once you're in there, you're completely, you're completely surrounded there. This is the matter, once you get in.
So that's connecting to an already existing fences, which is.
Yes, there is a fence on that wood line and on that field.
Southside was important because of Route One, being right there, you know, child gets there, obviously, it's a very busy road, so we wanna make sure. This is six-foot fence, right?
Four, same as they already have there.
It's four-foot.
All right, that is Sunnyside.
We have a question. Okay.
So it's encompassed, um, around the playground, so the teachers come out from school door and it's around the playground. So if someone were trying to use that playground on, on the Saturday, Sunday, is there a way to get in or are they gonna kinda have to, are they gonna damage the fence trying to crawl in?
No, ma'am, there's a gate that they can go through. Ms. Pittman, everywhere you see those yellow thumbtacks, where there's a gate with the, the width of the gate denoted.
Okay, thank you.
That was a good point, climbing over the fence.
Yes.
Uh, this is Sunnyside, that entire field, we used part of the backstop on it. We used part of the backstop on Sunnyside in the way we were to get that entire field covered. Uh, we made sure that, uh, we got their dodgeball areas and their, their softball areas included on it as well. And we also included their existing blacktop for, for their activities they use on that. That's, that's on the, uh, technically it's the north side of that, but on the right-hand side of this picture, that's where the trees we were avoiding as well. There's some, some larger vegetation there that if it ever fell, it would damage the fence. And we made sure we stayed far enough off of that to avoid it. All right, Sutherland is a different story. In order to get the most square footage of playground area with amount of fence that was attainable, we had to break this playground up into two areas. Uh, the, that portion you see there is the, uh.
K one?
Yeah, all right, so that's the.
Far left of the school.
That's the youngest kids. We were able to, we were able to enclose their entire playground, their blacktop and that entire, uh, field there with, with a very short amount of fence to get the most square footage where they can have activities and still stay enclosed. If you move to the next one, Ms. Golson, uh, this is the older playground where that is the fifth grade around to the third grade wings, where they're getting their, uh, I guess it's a, a version of basketball, it's including their entire courtyard, but it's also giving access to where the thumbtacks are for emergency vehicles to make it in. And you are getting their entire playground enclosed there as well. Uh, then the third section, there was a very damaged section of mechanical fencing in, in the mechanical yard that is about thirty feet long that is gonna be, that's gonna be replaced as well as a, it was an eyesore, but it was also loosening the ground and it could've, it wouldn't have taken much to fall on somebody as well. We had a contractor there. We decided we go ahead and take care of it.
We need a motion for this one. Board members, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the project.
Second.
It has been moved in second that we approve the fencing project. All those in favor, use the usual sign. Aye. It, it, we, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got you. Well, I may need you again for some technical. Um, so, uh, the next, the next, uh, project we have before you is, uh, it was an emergency procurement of our, uh, boiler at Denwoodie Middle School. Um, it's kind of a interesting situation. The night before the first, uh, bid meeting on, on the property, we did have a mishap, um, in, in our, in one of our boilers at Denwoodie Middle School and it was destroyed. It was a total loss. So we had to quickly shift and change from bidding out all of our boilers at Denwoodie Middle School, Midway Elementary and Denwoodie Elementary, and just do an emergency procurement for the middle school and then do the other two boilers separate, which will come at a later date. Um, but we did, we were able to get, uh, a good price with a trusted, reputable, uh, technician that's gonna install this boiler. Um, and they've already been awarded the, uh, contract. It was five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. They were the low bid. Um, and they have been awarded that through emergency process and it's being paid for out of the county, uh, fiscal year twenty-five county CIP money. Um, but we, we did bring this before you. It, it has already been, you know, procured because it was an emergency, but we did bring it before you so that you were, you had knowledge of this and didn't know what was going on. Uh, we will be bringing the other two buildings boilers before you, uh, at a later date. Are there any questions that we can answer?
You already started the work?
No, ma'am. They, they have, what they had to do is order the boiler. Um, the other, the other nice thing about that, well, I say nice, it's not nice, but it's gonna help us, is that, um, we are gonna be able to do an insurance claim on this and that'll help fund some of this for us.
Yeah, I think you, you told us before, it was just one boiler at the middle school and now.
Yeah, and that one boiler's doing well. You know, I know, uh, Matt and his, his HVAC guys are working hard to keep that boiler, keeping Denwoodie Middle School comfortable. And as long as we don't get down into the teens for a prolonged period of time, I, I, it'll, it'll handle it. Um, but we wanna make sure we got it up to full capacity, so.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
We already.
Well, we have, we have procured it, but it would be nice to have board approval.
Okay, I need, entertain a motion.
Madam Chairperson, I move that we approve the emergency procurement boiler replacement and upgrades at the, uh, middle school.
Second. It has been moved in second that, uh, we, um, approve this project. All of those in favor, use the usual sign.
Aye.
It's, we have, it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the final thing, uh, for approval this evening is, as you know, we work with the Virginia School Board Association. Um, they provide us with policy services. Um, this is our yearly, um, our annual, we bring to you the agreement and we're asking for your approval, um, for us to continue in this agreement with the Virginia School Board Association. Um, I believe that the amount is twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, and they provide us with the policies, policies, excuse me, policies. We can adopt them or we can adjust them based on our own need, but we just need your approval for that for us to continue.
We'll entertain a motion. We use them anyway. This is nothing different.
This is something we use every year, so when we bring the policies for first review, those usually are what has come from Virginia School Board Association.
We will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairwoman, I move that we approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Virginia School Board Association Policy Services Agreement.
Second. It has been moved in second that we accept the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six VSB Policy Services Agreement. All of those in favor, use the usual sign, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It's approved. Superintendent matters.
So the first is the ARGS update. Do you wanna talk just a little bit about your experience going back to?
It was definitely full circle.
Yes.
I, I'm a graduate of, uh, Governor's School in Petersburg, so, um, I think, you know, my time in Denwoodie Schools, that was probably about like eight or so years ago. Um, and I'm like, oh, that's so recent, but also so far away. And then, you know, graduated five years ago from the Governor's School. It's like, things have changed, things haven't changed. Um, I think it's pretty exciting to see all the new changes. Some of the changes that are unfortunate are a bit disheartening, but, you know, they've got a lot of school board members that are, you know, prepared to address that. Um, some of the things that we had discussed at our most recent advisory board meeting, um, they had applied for a historical grant, um, and they're doing some fundraising efforts, uh, to repair the roof. Um, if you don't know, the Governor's School used to be the old Petersburg High School, so it's been around for quite some time. Um, a lot of people's grandparents and great-grandparents, uh, were potentially students there. Um, so they're having to do a lot of work to, uh, do repairs to a very old building. Um, of course, if you're someone that's done any work in code enforcement or what have you, know that there's also a lot of, uh, restrictions and requirements for historical buildings as well. Um, so they're, you know, just trying to get the money for that. Um, they also received a six thousand dollar, uh, grant from VDOE to upgrade the school's, uh, security apparatus. Um, every instructional space also in, uh, the schools, every classroom is gonna receive a smart board. Um, so they talked about the installation of those. Uh, they are, uh, we approved, uh, a salary study there, um, so they are going to be looking at, um, bringing in a third party to look at how much the teachers and faculty are making. Initially, the proposal was just for teachers. Another school board member there had pointed out that it shouldn't just be teachers, it should be every faculty member. Um, so they're gonna do a salary study for that, um, and they compared the salary that, uh, faculty at the Governor's School are making to Chesterfield, Richmond, Petersburg, you know, comparable, um, districts, and they definitely on the bottom. Um, and, you know, just because of how they receive their funding, you know, it can be a bit of a frustration trying to figure out how are they gonna pay them more. Um, so they're gonna use that salary study and hopefully the salary study just, uh, gives them the extra, uh, boost to go ahead and, uh, do what needs to be done there. Um, the last thing is, uh, they were changing the school days, uh, to afford for inclement weather. Um, so I know one of the benefits that, uh, the students at the Governor's School get to enjoy, I know I enjoyed it, is having a fifty-two minute long lunch break. Um, but they are now cutting it down from fifty-two minutes to thirty minutes, um, and then adding that into instructional time, uh, to make up for all the snow days that we've gotten. I had a bit of a pushback against that, uh, 'cause I know how much I benefited from it as a student. Um, but nonetheless, you know, they're, they're doing it for, uh, you know, just state requirements. Yeah. Um, I know everything's going well at the Governor's School, so very excited, looking forward to what we'll be able to accomplish throughout the rest of the year.
Okay, thank, thank you. Are there any questions for Jason? From all, okay. Rowantie update? You wanted to go do more, you gonna leave?
I think we've heard you.
We gonna leave, we gonna leave it like what we hear. So we gonna, we gonna pass Rowantie based on what we heard earlier, which was a complete report. Thank you. Are there any citizen comments?
Did I miss?
Oh, I did. Budget six oh three, yes. Um, forgive me for that. I have it written and then went going on anyway.
I do recognize that I am now the one standing in between everybody and dinner, and so, um, I probably should be planning better to do this presentation moving forward. But I am very, um, happy to stand before you and talk to you about, um, our fiscal year twenty-six budget. Um, our proposed budget. Um, I will say that, um, and I have Krista here as well. So she's close by. She has all of her notebooks and she, I told her, bring her brain and bring her notebook in case there were some questions that, so she has both of those on her tonight. Um, and this budget really is about how we're gonna continue to manage the present, but continue to, but also create the future, uh, while we're doing that. Um, just, just a brief history about where our funding comes from. A lot of people do question that. Um, the majority of our funding does come from the state, um, and then it comes from the locality. Um, and very, very small portion of our funding comes from the federal government. So I know there've been a lot of questions lately about what's gonna happen to federal funding. Um, I don't have any indication that any of our federal funding is going to be disrupted in any way. I do feel like that will be coming to us. It just might come from a different location. Um, but most of our money comes to us from the state and from the locality, and that's why, because we're not, um, we cannot generate revenue here in the county. Um, and so that's why whenever we want to do a new initiative or we want to do something that our budget, current budget cannot support, we have to lean on our locality to help us in that endeavor. I just wanna talk to you a little bit about Denwoodie County Public Schools, and I know that you know this. Uh, we are a hundred percent accredited. Um, our goal is to be the premier school district in the Commonwealth. We really mean that we can do that. I know that we have the right people to do that work. Uh, we have currently four thousand students. Um, and you'll see that we're building our budget this upcoming year on smaller number, um, just to be somewhat conservative. Uh, we do have over a, uh, pre, a hundred preschoolers. That number continues to, to increase, uh, but we do not receive, we technically don't receive, um, we can't count them in our ADM when we're asking for funding. We have seven schools that are pre-K through twelve, and we participate in three regional programs. Um, the Appomattox Regional Governor's School, which you, you heard Mr. Brown talk about this evening. We also have Maggie Walker's Governor's School and Code RVA. Um, Maggie Walker and Code RVA have been recent in the last six or seven years. Um, and we also have Career and Technical Center, um, at Rowantie. We're considered by the State of Virginia to be a small slash midsize. I don't know what that really means, because how do you be small and midsize? We're considered by the state of Virginia to be a small slash midsize. I don't know what that really means because how do you be small and midsize organization? But we are the fourth largest employer in Dinwiddie County and I think that that does mean something here. Our buses safely travel over about 1.8 million miles a year. That is amazing because when I look at other school districts, some of them are comparable, but not in size. But they're huge school districts and they don't travel that much, but because we're so big, we travel a great distance. And that's why snow days, we tend to take different kind of snow days because we're so big. We also have served over 700,000 delicious meals and I will just give kudos to Ms. Elder. She does a great job in our nutrition services. We have about 10,000 devices currently and we have one-to-one instruction for all of our students. And our maintenance team takes care of about 900,000 square feet in our small, mid-sized organization. And I just wanted you to see last year's operating budget. The majority of the money first is about instruction, which it should be. And then beyond that, it's maintenance and then transportation and then all of the other areas. We do make sure that every learner has a space here in Dinwiddie County. I talked to you about preschool. There was a time, I would think about eight years ago, when we may have had a couple of preschool classrooms and now we have preschool at every single school. So there is something for every child. We do understand that we've got to get to them before they're five years old. We don't believe that they have to come to the public school setting for that, but we do want them to have a quality early learning experience. We have virtual learning that's afforded to our students. We also have college bearing, college credit bearing courses. You've heard a lot about Rowantie Technical Center and that's expanding. Our children also can participate in, our students can participate in Chesterfield Recovery Academy. If they are in recovery from an addiction, they can be high school students there, so we are part of that. We have a partnership with them. They can go to Encompass Learning Center and once again, that is not about behavior. That's about students that don't fit well in the traditional learning, so they go to the Encompass Learning Center. Great program over there. We also have RISE, so we have school at night for students that need another kind of setting. We also have GDD programs for both students and adults. And we have students, a couple of students that attend Keys Academy in Petersburg. That's a partnership we have with them. And then finally, we have a lot of accelerated opportunities. And I've really been very proud of the opportunities, especially at our middle school level where we have a lot of middle school students now going to the high school and getting high school credit in the eighth grade. The bottom line is we really are trying to prepare our young people for their futures, not the future that we selected, but the one that they're selecting. And so all along the way, we're trying to figure that out. And so here's kind of evidence that we're moving in that right direction. Currently, our four-year graduation rate, our on-time graduation rate is 92%, which is very impressive. You know, eight years ago, it was about 85%. So we are moving in the right direction. Our five-year graduation rate bumps that up even further. 52% of our students go on to post-secondary education. 101 college credits were earned last year. 100% of our students have a career in academic plan, which helps them to guide their course picking, when they're choosing courses. It also helps when you're talking with a student, if, you know, if there's been a discipline infraction, you can say, how does that goal align with what you just did? And it also allows, keeps the parent engaged in what the students are doing. 47%, you heard Dr. Lathrop speak about this. We have the highest number of enrollees at Rowantie Technical Center, so 47% of their current enrollment is our students. Two of our students last year received an associate's degree and we have 16 that are on course this year to receive that. So I'm very excited about those opportunities as well. And last year, there were 552 credentials earned at the high school level. Bottom line is that we want every student to be enrolled, enlisted, or employed. It doesn't matter. We just want them to be ready for the pathway they choose, but we want them to have lots of opportunities. Our vision and mission is to make sure that, the vision is to make sure that every student is life-ready and has a path to lifelong success. We talk about here, the most important day for our young people is the day after they graduate. All the things leading up to that are great, but it is about what are they going to do the day after they leave us? Do they have a path toward that lifelong success that they can be, to take care of themselves? And we want to make sure that we engage the, and we believe that they can be this productive citizen if we engage the entire community in that process. So we try to keep that wire, we do keep that wire in front of us at all times. I think sometimes when we go, especially to other, like we go to the county and we start talking about, well, here's the school system's budget. It really isn't about the school system's budget because the children that we're educating, these are our schools. These schools belong to Dinwiddie County and there are a lot of benefit that come from investing in the education of young people. And these are some that came out, you know, looking at the research. When we talk about economic development, the first thing businesses want to know about it when they bring a business here, tell me about how your schools are doing. Because that will tell them a lot about what's happening out in the community. Civic engagement, you know, educated students and civic engagement go hand in hand. You see a reduced crime rate for places where you see high graduation rates. So there are lots of benefits in the community and I think, you know, helping the community to see that this is, these are our students, regardless of whether we have students that attend Dinwiddie County Public Schools. There is a benefit to me as a citizen. There's a benefit to me as a taxpayer to make sure that we're investing in the public school system. So the budget process really never stops. Hi Kristi. All right, so the minute we stop, the minute when we think the budget process is over, it starts again. So as you can see, we started back in July with this budget cycle. So I just wanted to remind you that we've been in this process since July, when the new fiscal year began, July 1st. And Kristi and her team are monitoring the revenue, making sure that we're on top of the CIP request, doing an audit of the previous year, which takes quite a bit of time. And then you can see in October, December, we start moving into this budget cycle. And that's what we've been working on. We wait, wait till the governor's budget comes out in December. And once the budget, but, excuse me, the governor's budget come out, then the House and the Senate got to get together. So the House has their budget recommendations, the Senate has theirs, and then they've got to agree. And that's, that's usually quite a feat to get the House and the Senate, you know, to come together. This is probably a very unusual year for us because the House and the Senate have very similar recommendations. And they were able to put forth the general assembly budget pretty quickly. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the governor's budget, what that currently looks like for us. And then what came out of the general assembly, what that could look like for us. But at the bottom line is this got to go to the governor and he either signs it or he vetoes it. So that's where we're kind of in that waiting game right now. So once we go through that process, we needed to establish some priorities and you know, we've met with you all in work sessions to, and to talk to you about the goals and the value and what the data is saying and what needs to be in the budget. We have to look at what our enrollment is because the enrollment really is going to dictate to us the amount of money that's going to come from the State Department. We also need to look at our existing expenses, the things that are non-negotiables, the things that we are going to have to take care of in our budgets. We've got to gather stakeholder input, which we did, through internal advisories, through external means to make sure that we have lots of voices at the table, what's important in this budget. We've got to look at our policies and our requirements, both in, whether it's Virginia code or federal law, to make sure we've got all of that covered. And then finally, and probably most important, we've got to make sure there is an alignment to our existing comprehensive plan. So after we done all of those things, we came up with the following three priorities for this budget season. Number one is compensation. Number two is safety and security. And number three is an investment in our capital, our small capital projects. And that's what I'm going to be focusing on tonight. I will not be talking to you about the large capital. But the bottom line is what you're going to hear me talk about are the things that have had the great, we believe are going to have the greatest impact on the success of our young people. And we really have prioritized their needs based on the importance to student learning. So I said before about enrollment. I want to talk to you about enrollment. I want to show you what our enrollment currently looks like. So since the pandemic, which I know I'm not supposed to say COVID, but you can see that, you know, after that, we took a pretty large dip. We did have a number of students that left us and, and so that we have not really recovered from that yet. We did go through that 10-year enrollment study. Now, what they reported to us is that over the next 10 years, our enrollment was going to be relatively stable. I took the word stable off that, this slide because for me, I don't think it looks stable enough for me to say the word stable. What they did say to us though is after five years, come back and do like a refresh. Because, you know, having, we have something, a very unusual experience with the 2020 to 2021 school year. So maybe come back, you know, after it's been five years past that time, so we can take a look at what the enrollment is looking at, looking like at that point. So right now, we are hovering right at 4,000 students, which is significantly lower than we built our budget on last year. We built our budget on 4,100 students last year. And this school year, fiscal year 25, we learned quickly that we had built our budget on 4,100 students and we started the school year with less students than that. And so we knew during this budget year, we had to be very, very conservative. And so we have made sure that we can balance the budget even in this school year because we've got to make sure we make those corrections right now. So let me show you what the governor's budget, what his projection is. Now, we are going to build this year's budget on 3975 because we think that's going to be a much more conservative number moving forward. So remember, this is the second year of the biennium, so there's really not a lot of surprises from the governor's budget. And furthermore, you know, he is, there's about to be a new election. And so you probably won't see a lot of new kind of incentives or any things, things are in his budget. But when you base the budget, let me just draw your attention to, in your folder, I'd shared this with you before, that long sheet of paper. So if you look at the, the second line, the second column there, it says fiscal year 26 budget, second year of the biennium. Okay, you can see, you can see the, that, you can see all the things I'm getting ready to share with you. We've just kind of, we've put them together, but, so we have based it, when they pushed it out to us, they did not base it on 3975. We actually were, you know, would have been receiving money had we had 4,100 students. But because we're going to base our budget on 3975 and be realistic, you can see what that's going to do to the governor's budget and the amount of money the governor was introducing to provide us. So he was projecting more than that amount of money that's there at the bottom. But because we're reducing it by 125 children, it's significantly going to show us that we would really be at a deficit of $985,000 to begin our budget planning, which, you know, is not a good place to be. But, you know, we had been working already this school year on making some reductions. We knew it was coming. So we wanted, you know, we've been very conservative and, you know, and we've, in our staffing and things of that nature. So, you know, you can see that on the back page there, there really was to be an increase, but you can see there's a reduction in state funds of $985,400. But we should have, you know, we would expect to see, receive more than that. Okay? Now, so what we did was we said, okay, we're starting basically, we've got to find, we've got to figure this out. We've got to balance this budget. So we met with every budget holder to identify the potential areas of reductions. And one of the biggest things that we did is we eliminated 11 positions. These are positions that either somebody was either retiring, leaving the position, and we said, do we need the position? Is it a position we have to have? Is there another way to make sure that we're not interrupting, we're not interrupting instruction? And we can still take care of young people. And so we were able to eliminate these 11 positions. And we were able to find $931,308. So I really applaud the teams for being able to do that. Just to give you a sense of the student growth over time, back in fiscal year 2021, you can, you can see the, the budget that we received and the number of students we based our budget on over time. And as Kristi and I were talking today, we said that probably a couple of years ago, we probably shouldn't have made the budget at 4,100 students then. We probably could have started to reduce that number, so it's been such a drastic number right now. But we are where we are in this moment. So you see, and the 14%, and the 10%, that's when we received additional money for at-risk funding, when they came back to us and gave us that money. Okay? I also want to show you about what we've done with compensation over time. On the left-hand side, you see, once again, the SOQ-funded pay raises. This came from the state. So in fiscal year '22, it was 5%. And then, and there was 5% in '23, 5% in '24, 3% in '25, and we're proposing 3% this year. But I want to show you on the right-hand side, what you as a school board approved and we were able to provide to our teachers. It was above the 5% over these years and also above the 3% in the last year. But this year being the conservative year that we really need to be, we think we have to stick with the 3%. And most every other school district is doing the same.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so with the SOQ-funded positions, we have less money that we'll be receiving, going with the lower number. But then the pay increases, the conservative number is 3%. So if the increase is going up and then the, as a Q-funding is going down, you know, how are we bridging that gap? Like, where's that extra money coming from?
It's going to be from our ask of the locality and that's what I'm going to get to about. This is where we, we ask the locality to lean into this because I'm going to show you what their transfer's been for the last five years. So this is when you go to your locality and say, we need you to provide this much support for this year. Yeah, that was a great question. Thank you. Just want to show you where we are relative to teacher's starting pay. And you can see there, I think the red line shows where we are now. It looks like it's showing Chesterfield County. It does. But we, yeah, I'm not sure why that. I don't know either, but we're not Chesterfield County and we're, you know. And so, but you can see how close we are to the top as far as teacher's starting pay.
I think when we eliminated Petersburg and Sussex.
Yeah, it's okay. It's fine. But we're really close to the top as part of starting pay for teachers. We actually got some data, Emily and Kristi both got some data from the school rounding school systems. Our starting pay is pretty strong. Our, the pay at the top of the scale is pretty strong, right? It's in the end, we're in the middle where we probably need to do some work for teacher pay. But we do a really good job. The loyalty factor, as we say, the longer people stay with us, they can make more money by staying here rather than being at these larger school districts or starting, you know, because you can see Dinwiddie County is right up there, you know, at the top with Henrico. We can't compete with Henrico. Henrico gets their raises from their locality always and they do 8%, 9%, 10% almost every year.
Can you explain a little bit more what you mean by the middle? Like, is that mean we're not giving raises like everyone else is or?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's our scale.
It's the structure of our scale.
Yeah.
It's, it's staggered like between zero and like five years, it's like 0.6, 7% between steps. And then it goes up to like 1% and then it goes to 1.25 and it goes to 2% between steps. And then it eventually gets to 2.25 for like the last five or six years. And so if you look at it, like, you know, when you start out, so when you get to the middle, it hasn't been as much percentage between the steps as it is towards the end.
Right.
And so it's not even.
Where does that scale come from? Did we create that scale?
Yes, we did. We had a teacher, we had a committee of teachers that developed it. I want to say it was like in '15, '16.
It's been about, I'm going to say.
Yeah, it's, it's been about 10 years and it, it used to be there was the same percentage between every step. And so what, what came out of this committee was we wanted to reward people as, as it got further on. And of course, anything you do at the very beginning is going to trickle all the way down. So to fix, you know, to do different things is very costly.
So, yeah, so one of the things that needs to happen, you should be doing a compensation study about every five to seven years. So it's been 10 years since we've done the one with teachers. And it's already time for us to do the one with other staff as well. And so in next year's budget, that is going to be one of the things that we talk about is because we need to talk about that. Because if not, at some point, I think the teacher skill is going to get, it's going to, the middle's going to be, you know, it won't be able to handle what's happening to it, you know? So I just think we have to take a look at that. I love what we do on both ends of it, but. I love what we do on both ends of it, but.
We voted to make some changes to that last year, correct? That was.
To raise the, to raise the starting salary. Yep, to raise the starting salary, which we've done for the past maybe six or seven years here. We've, we've done, you as a board have done a great job raising the teacher's starting scale. Because it used to be that Dinwiddie was closer to the bottom than the top. But, you know, that's, you know, one thing that can get them there. The other thing, you know, that is an attraction, but also benefits are also an attraction as well, you know? So we've got to figure out what it is that's going to get people into a community and want them to stay here, right? So there's the answer to your question, Mr. Brown. So here's what the local transfers look like over time. So in fiscal year 21, that was the year after COVID, there was a 0% increase in the transfer. In fiscal year 22, they provided us with a 3.3% increase of $500,000. And then fiscal year 23, it was $300,000. And fiscal year 24 is $200,000. I will say the majority of those times, it's usually about supporting teachers. So the county has historically liked it to be about something. So when they do provide the transfer, you know, they're providing it toward like teacher pay. They've been very supportive of that. But as you see, last year, it was 0%. So we had a 0% in fiscal year 21. We had a 0% in '25. So in those years in the middle there, it's not even keeping up with cost of living and none of those kind of raised, none of those things, right? So we've really had to lean on just taking care of trying to solve the problems internally. Fortunately, you know, we've been able to take care of things like, you know, we've had grant funds and things like that. So we've been able to be somewhat creative in what we've done. But this is the year where it's, we really do need the county to lean in. And I don't know if you're following the news and you're watching other school systems, but almost every school system that I've seen has, it's millions of dollars that they're asking their locality for. You know, I think in Chesterfield, it was like 20-some million that they were asking the locality. So everybody this year is saying, okay, we need help, you know, with that. So you see there, our request is going to be for one, on the governor's budget, 1.5 million dollars. And this is just for the operating budget, right? For the part that has to do with salary increases. And that's a 9.3% increase. Inside the budget also are some required increases. Salary increases we have to do because that is what the governor put in his budget. So it does, you know, we have to do salary increases. Also, we want to take care of our people. I do believe that smart people and talented people can work anywhere. And I want them to continue to want to work here. And we got to pay them accordingly. And I will tell you that we do sometimes tend to leave people and it is about money to go other places. Sometimes they chase the, you know, it's something about the signing bonuses. It's about, it's so hard to keep up with all the incentives that are out there now for employees. We did, there is an increase in the instructional academic supplements this year. We had some increases in custodial, building maintenance, and exceptional education services that we have to take care of. And then we also have in there, it is almost time for our comprehensive plan to be rewritten. And there's money in there for us to cover the cost of a consultant to help us to develop that. So break that down a little bit further for you. Here's what the compensation looks like for priority one. 3% for all employees is 1.4 million dollars. For teachers, it's 882,000. We broke that down because the county does typically like to see exactly how much it is for teachers. All others is $530,000. We added one additional ESL teacher there because that, those numbers are continuing to increase. We have 12 different languages now in our school system and we do need the support for young people. And we want to take a part-time speech position to make it full-time. And you can see what those costs are there. And we also are requesting that all of our SROs have been grant-funded in the past. We've paid for two. The county has been paying for one. But all except for one are coming out of those grants. We were just informed of that this year. So we are requesting the county to, to transfer all of the financial responsibility of the SROs to the county for the upcoming year. So that would mean six of them would be in their operations, operation budget. And one would continue to be grant-funded. Okay. And so what we would need for the county is that, once again, it's that 1.5 million dollars, which would be a total of $17,702,000 for the upcoming school year. And that's just for, as I said, that's for just the Fund 205. Now, there's some other things that we did not put in the budget, but do sometimes we think that we need to consider should additional funding become available to us? Health insurance. We received notice that we have a 12% increase in health insurance this year, which is at a cost of $156,000. So right now, I know I hear everybody. So right now, we have not included that in the cost. But, you know, so right now, the worry is, do we push that out to employees? But when you push that out to employees, it doesn't feel like a raise, right? So you've given them 3%. 3% is not a big increase. Then you push out healthcare to them. It just, you know, but at some point, we got to talk about that because I think, I believe it's over $6 million right now that you all as a board pay for healthcare insurance for employees, over $6 million.
They got numbers projected and don't have the official numbers?
Yes.
Most of the people on our local choice plan have received them. They think more favorable than what the.
That's great.
So we're hoping that that falls in line in our favor.
Yes, that happened to us last year. So hopefully it'll come back at a lower number for us. We do have five instructional positions that we would like to put back in the budget should additional money be available. And primarily that is because we like to keep the class sizes K3 at 20, 20 to 1, not the 22 and 23 and 24. If we can keep them smaller, that's better for our teachers, especially with all of our literacy efforts. We have an additional counselor at the elementary level that we'd like to be able to keep. And we'd like to add an additional social worker because there's just so much need that really the middle school and high school need their own social worker. And then we need a couple of social workers that can just work with elementary schools. Because this dividing up is, is really difficult for the social workers. And I think the principals would appreciate having more support as well. So, as I said, the general assembly over the weekend, so this is hot off the press, did come together and it was pretty remarkable that their budgets looked very similar. They both agreed to the 3%. They both agreed to raise, lifting the support cap. They both agreed to special ed funding. And also, they both agreed to a $1,000 teacher bonus. So that was pretty incredible. It is for this year, so we've got to, we're going to probably have to figure that out. So you can see on that long sheet of paper that I gave you, all the way to the right shows you what our funding would look like with the general assembly. But the good news is with the general assembly, we would receive an additional $166,000. So this is a more favorable budget for us. And so we are very hopeful that the governor will sign off on that. Okay? So if that's the case, then what we would do, if the governor signs off on us and that becomes the budget, then instead of the 1.5 million dollars we're asking the county for, we go back and ask the county for 1.1 million dollars because we are still going to need the support for the pay increases for employees. But that also would put back in there those five instructional positions, that social worker, that counselor, and the health insurance. Is that right, Kristy, or did I misspeak? Okay. So that puts those things in there that we have prioritized that should additional money become available. Okay? And it keeps the SROs funded by the county. And that's if the governor signs off on that. Okay? So this is what, with the governor's budget, where you can see the percentages. Once again, instructional is where all the money is. And then beyond that, it's still maintenance and transportation. And technology is a smaller number. But it just shows you where the money is being spent. And this shows you the revenue, our state revenue, 70% of our money comes from the state. About 29% of our money would come from the county. And then you see less than 1% of our money comes from federal. Okay. Just to give you a sense, the entire, entire operating budget would be $61.3 million. We anticipate we'd start the year zero because we don't typically carry money over. We ask for any monies that are left over to be put into capital so we can use it for capital projects. So we would start with zero balance and end with a zero balance the end of next year's school year. So the second priority is really goes to Fund 302. So I want to talk to you about that. And I know Mr. Walters came and talked to you in depth with this, so I won't go into too much detail with it. But for those people that are here in the audience and those that are at home, priority two was about safety and security. And so what we are asking for from the county is we would like to, them to invest in a security system management for all of our, all of our localities. This is exactly what they have at their, what they use in the county. What this will do is it will integrate our system with the county system. So for example, if we had an intruder in one of our schools, immediately they can camera into, they have the same system we have, so we're all connected. They can immediately see where it is, what they need to do and how they need to get in there. So it just connects us all. Right now, what's happening is all of our security systems are basically aging out. And with the matter of next five years or so, we will, our systems will no longer, we can't even find parts for the systems that we currently have. We can't keep up with it. This will allow us to have a system in place that this company will come in and manage the entire process, keep everything updated over time. But the other benefit is it keeps us connected to the county as well. So they will update any kinds of software and firmware. There'll be a maintenance plan that'll be in place. It will take care of all of, eight of our buildings. And it'll do, take care of 100% of our equipment. And so there's just so many benefits to this. We've already met with Mr. Massengill and with Ms. Howerton to go over this process with them and about the benefits of us being, you know, having the same type of security system in place that we have. I do believe that schools right now are very soft targets. I worry about school systems. And I think that, you know, you always think that things won't happen to your school system and your small community. And I just feel like we need to do whatever we possibly can to make sure that our schools are the safest they possibly can be for our young people and the people that work in them. And I believe that this system will do just that. And so this will cost somewhere, it will not exceed $4 million. It's a six-year kind of investment on the front end. And that's what we're asking the county for the next six years to invest $667,000 for six years. And I have Mr. Walters here can go in more detail. He'd like him to talk to you about that. And then finally, the last priority is the small capital. And you know that every year they provide us with $150,000. And I'm going to tell you, that $150,000 goes very, very fast because we have aging facilities. And if we're not making major investments in our facilities, we have to dip into things like the small capital for our facilities, but also to do things like take care of cars, to take care, you know, when things happen in our buildings that we didn't plan on or when we have to add a new classroom, we got to put furniture in it. And so it becomes a place that we really haven't had a lot of reserve to lean on in case, in times of like that. So what Mr. Walters, I know he shared this with you as well. If we could increase that to $300,000, that would allow us to fully implement a small capital plan and have money in reserves from year to year for emergencies that would take place in our aging facilities. It would be able to take care of our paint schedule that now we put in place that it is quite costly. It would give us some contingency funding should there be emergencies that take place. Furniture replacement, we have a schedule for that now that was implemented this year. But one of the biggest things had to do with our fleet replacement. Because previously, it was like, oh, we need a car, so let's put a car in for this year. Now we have a plan that outlines, we need a fleet. We are driving more and more students to and from places. We have more kids that are homeless, so we're driving all over the different counties and all over the region. So what this will do is we would partner with a rental agency and we would shift from owning vehicles to leasing vehicles. And we would have 48 fleet, 48 fleet vehicles over the next five years. And for the next five years, it would start to reduce the cost of fuel and maintenance because you're driving a newer vehicle over the next five years. Versus some of our vehicles, we have names for them because they're so much, they're older and, you know, they're our beloved vehicles. But, you know, having them on a five-year cycle, especially when we're driving them so much, is much smarter from a safety standpoint as well. So we have a great plan to do that. And we do believe from a small capital process, if we raise that to 300,000, we can cover this process in the small capital plan. And I do thank Mr. Walters for his resourcefulness. He said, I have a problem, but I have a solution, which I like that. Okay. So the bottom line is this, that we are trying to reduce, we're trying to make sure we have a plan for lowering any kind of risk that are happening, whether it be in our schools, on our streets, with our students, with our staff. And so I feel for me, asking the county, this 967,000 additional funding to do just that is nothing compared to what could happen, right? And so I think this six-year commitment is exactly what is needed in order to move our school forward, new school system forward. So we're asking for additional $150,000 for the small capital and the 667,000 six-year commitment for the, in order to fund priority three. Okay? Just to give you a sense of Fund 302, this is what we have in small capital right now. I just want you, that looks very exciting because it looks like we have a lot of money in small capital. I will tell you that most, all of that money, Mr. Walters has a plan. There's already plans in place, but a lot of these things are already underway or it's scheduled for the summer. A lot of that, there's a, we still have a million dollars right now that's attached to Sunnyside and their electricity issue out there. So we're still trying to work through that and what we're going to do there. But if we add the $967,000, we, we expect to spend around 1.4 million dollars. That would leave us with about 1.2 million dollars at the end of next school year. But it's, it's constantly moving because we do foresee there being things that if they don't start investing in Dinwiddie Middle School, we've got a lot of projects that are needed there that we need to start doing some, some much-needed work at Dinwiddie Middle School. So the total request for, for the budget is this. For Fund 205, we're asking for additional 1.5 million dollars. And what that would do is take care of all the compensation costs. And it would move all of the SROs. And we ask, and we're also, as a secondary, asking them to fund all of the SROs. We still want to keep them. We just don't want, we want the funding to be in their operation budget. In Fund 302, we're asking for there to be an increase in the small capital projects. And we're asking for them to also fund the $667,000 over the next six years as well. And so our next steps are this, there's nothing for you to act on today. This is all information for you to go back and think about and, you know, talk about and talk to your constituents about. We do have a two-by-two meeting that's coming up. Ms. Benjamin and I will be meeting, and I think Mr. Walker, and we'll be meeting with Mr. Massengill and his team to talk about the budget further. We have board work sessions that are coming up, so we'll be talking about the budget then. We do anticipate the joint board meeting is coming up in March 12, 12, 11? 12, thank you. March the 12th at 6 o'clock, we'll be presenting there. And then we need the county to consider, you know, what they're going to do for us. And then the county will approve their budget, we'll approve our budget and the like. So there's still a lot of conversation to be had. And we still, you know, anytime you can have a time to sit down with your constituent or your partner on the other side and help them to understand the kinds of things that are needed in this budget, that's greatly appreciated. And we know that many people in the office up here have meetings scheduled as well with theirs. I just want to say thank you, you know, for, on behalf of all of us because, you know, what we're doing here is creating the future that our young people deserve. And I just really thank you for that. And I believe that this is the budget to do just that. So we'd be happy, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have or anyone here might be happy to be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. West, I have one question.
Sure.
You, you're always so thorough. I appreciate that.
Sure.
But I feel like in the last year or so, we had a conversation about our budget breakdown. And it was like 80-something percent comes from the state. Do you know those numbers? What percentage of our budget?
70.5.
70.5 and then whatever.
80% of our budget is personnel, but yes.
So where I'm going with that is, there was like a small percentage that was. So where I'm going with that is, there was like a small percentage that was federally funded.
Less than 1%.
Less than 1%. So there's, there's talk in the news about that going away.
Yes.
How does that affect us if it does?
So, so, and that's what we, we've not received any guidance from the federal governor, government. But what we are hearing from the superintendents is that we do not believe that the funding is going to go away. It just might come from a different office. It might come from the state level, it might, but we believe the funding will be intact for children. So we have no reason to believe that.
I'm just curious, worst-case scenario, what parts of our division are affected by that?
So it, it will have major impact because we have people inside of some of our federal grants. So we have people inside of special education grants. We have Title I grants. We, where we have a reading facilitators. We have, who else inside of? The behavior specialist, behavior specialist. And also professional development. Is that? Yes, conferences, professional development monies, mentor, teacher mentor monies. So it would impact us, right? So we'd have to figure out a way, first to take care of the people that are inside of that. That's why it's, you know, it's, when you put people inside of grants, it's, you know, iffy. With ESL, there's money inside that, not much. But CTE, we have monies there for equipment. But, you know, from the, you know, so I think we, I don't see, foresee it going away because it is for vulnerable children. I just feel like it's going to come from a different place. But we don't know. I mean.
Southern Elementary is a Title I school?
Yes.
We would lose what additional funding that we would receive from?
Yes, so Title I is one of our, that's our biggest federal grant that we receive. And actually, you know, Ms. Valentine's going to be coming to talk to you later about all of the schools, you know, we're trying to move all of the schools in that direction because they do qualify.
So we're trying to move them to?
They're currently, yeah, come here.
To clarify that point you just made, you're saying that we're going to look at moving our schools to being?
Well, the elementary schools. So our element, all of our elementary schools right now, except for Midway, are Title I schools, all of them.
Okay.
And so, but Midway, over the years, the demographics of Midway is changing, right? And so they have been kind of on the cusp of being able to qualify for that. So there's always been conversation, do we, don't we? Because the minute you do that, then it's now the resources get spread. You don't get more money. This is the money you get, but it gets spread amongst five schools versus four schools, right? So there's been conversations about that. I don't think any final decision, but I know that they will come to the board and talk to you all about that. But right now, it's the four schools except for Midway.
I just wanted to clarify that the federal funding within the budget in which she presented tonight is not any of those title grants. They are all in our grants fund. And our grants fund was, is not part of the operating fund, which it was not presented tonight because we don't need any county funding, you know, any request for our grants fund. So we will be bringing that back to you when we come for the presentation for the public hearing. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that, because technically, if you look overall, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but our, we, we do have more than, less than 1% of our budget funded by federal grants.
I just mentioned that this is how we're funded and a very small sliver of that. But we will go into every detail, so you'll get to see what every grant we have and what's in it.
Yeah.
When you said less than five, 1%, in dollars and cents, what would that be like?
It's 334, that, I can tell you. It's on the bottom of here. Federal funding is 339,650 dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's the Medicaid recovery costs that we receive. We are part of the Medicaid program. So we can file claims for the services that we provide. So 180,000 of it is for that. The E-rate that we receive is considered federal funding. And so that's about, I think it's 94,000. And then our JROTC program, the money that we receive to run that is like 65,000. And so all three of those are considered federal funding within our operating budget.
It's my understanding, though, that in, along with this talk of doing away with the Department of Education, they keep saying the states will handle the funds. So it would mean a whole new application process for everything, which would kind of put us on hold or standby for a while in a state of flux. But hopefully, it doesn't mean that all those funds just disappear.
Right. And, and, you know, with all that happening, then we're going to have a new governor. So that can be a whole, add to a whole nother level of, you know, because what happens in that seat makes a lot of difference to our schools and budgets as well.
Well, Dr. Weston, I want to thank not only you, but all other members of the school board, office staff. When you put together these presentations for us, you give them to us for us to review. You then appear before us to help explain them to us. Then you remain there while we ask every silly question we can think of. And I just thank you so much for the detail you go into to make sure that we understand what it is that we're getting ready to approve or disapprove. So thank you so much.
It's a good team. You have a great team.
Are we done with questions? Oh, thank you, Dr. Weston. But you ready for me to, we got to continue. So you ready for me to continue going? Okay. No citizen comments, okay? Board member comments? We'll start with Dr. Pearson.
No, I think I've said all I need to say so far this evening.
Okay. Now, you ready to go to dinner? Well, thank each person for staying. But I do want to say congratulations to all our teachers who made Teachers of the Year and to us, all of you are Teachers of the Year because you take care of our students, every one of you, teachers, staff, administrators. We appreciate you. Well, Dr. Weston, I guess she said enough too? Oh, she's, oh, you, okay, you, Dr. Weston, superintendent. Superintendent comments? You commented enough? Are there any other comments that would, we'd like to have, or would entertain a motion for adjournment?
Madam Chairperson, I move that.
We adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we adjourn. All in favor? Aye, ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.